All right, so first we have consideration of routine items. It's recommended that the agenda of the April tenth twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Melissa, second by George. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then it's recommended that the minutes of the March thirteenth twenty twenty-three regular board meeting be approved as presented. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
I'll second Tyler's motion.
Second by Matt, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. There are no statements from the public, so we will go with the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just want to give a brief update on progress on our baseball, softball, practice facility, as well as the bleacher update, bleacher repair and replacement at the football field. Happy to report that Center Point has moved the line, the gas line. Very appreciative getting that work done. Kudos to Mr. Ship. He spent a lot of time making sure that project stayed in the forefront of everyone's mind and got it scheduled, so that work's done. Masonry work is going on this week on the facility itself. We're also preparing for the peers, which will anchor the new bleachers at the football field. And we also received good word. The bleachers are still on time for a May delivery, which I guess I could say next month now. So things are progressing very nicely, still on time. And it's been a wet spring, but we do appreciate the contractors and all the people getting their work done, keeping that project on time. So football season opens up in the fall, we should be ready to go and have a super impressive looking facility. And I also want to send out a congratulations tonight to South Spencer High School senior, Trinity Britton. Do you all remember Trinity? We had her earlier as the all-time leading scorer for the girls' basketball program. She also learned last week that she was a recipient of the C Eugene Cato Memorial Scholarship. Mr. Cato was a longtime IHSS double A commissioner from Southern Indiana. And Trinity was one of twelve student athletes across the state to be awarded this scholarship. I think it's April nineteenth. They have a banquet at Lucas Oil Stadium where she will be recognized for that. And I know Mr. Bush was looking it up, but we feel, we think she might be the first South Spencer High School student athlete to earn an award. And it's based on the ideas that IHSS double A presents, wants their student athletes to represent, and leadership. So congratulations to Trinity. Nice honor. And that's all I have this evening.
Okay, so we'll move on to the consent items. Number one, approve the payroll claim documents and the accounts payable claims numbered two three zero two four oh, two two three zero four six seven. Number two, approve the treasurer's financial reports for February and March. Number three, accept the retirements of the following approved to post the positions and grant permission to hire. And that's Rose Halanich from Rockport Elementary as a teacher's aide effective May eighteenth twenty twenty-three. And then number four, accept the resignation of the following approved to post the positions and grant permission to hire. A Jill Gross, Luce Elementary Health Aid, effective April sixth, sixth twenty twenty-three. B Kayla Higgins, Rockport Elementary Special Education Teacher, effective May eighteenth twenty twenty-three. C Alicia Boozy, South Spencer High School Student Council Advisor, effective May eighteenth twenty twenty-three. And Zachary Wilkinson, South Spencer High School Girls Volleyball Assistant Coach, effective March thirteenth twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to accept the consent items?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have consideration of administrative recommendations. Mr. Schneider, number one.
Thank you. I've shared with the board the proposed strategic plan for the South Spencer County School Corporation. Strategic plan will be a living document, so it will have the flexibility to adapt and change to the needs of our students while still providing direction and goals for our district. Key components include implementing a strong research-based reading program at the elementary level, the development of career pathways at the high school, and the expansion of dual credit offerings at the high school. Our K through twelve CTE program will redefine college to include associate degrees, certificated programs, internships, enlistment in the armed services, and the four-year college degree. The CTE program will provide students with multiple career pathways and experiences. The strategic plan also includes a goal to invest in our people and community and to strategically allocate, allocate our resources. I recommend the board approve the strategic plan as presented.
All right, can I get a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, any discussion?
I do. This strategic plan was brought to us about forty-five to fifty days ago and asked us to review it and give our input and vote on it. And we had a work session on that where at the end of the work session, it was my understanding that we were going to get information for other school corporation strategic plans to make sure that our strategic plan lines up with other plans. And that a lot of the goals that were listed in the strategic plan aren't what I call SMART goals. They're, they, some say that they are, but when you look at a goal, you want it to be specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound. And a lot of the things that we have in this strategic plan don't meet those measurements. So it was my understanding that we were going to look at that stuff before voting on it this evening. This isn't a educational policy that we have to vote on, nor does it have any financial implications or consent items that we need to vote on as a board. But when it gets brought to us as a board to look at and give our input, that's what I assumed that we would do. And, you know, I could go into some of the examples of why I don't think that they're SMART goals, but I'm not going to waste the time tonight. I will, however, ask a couple of questions, and I'll open this up to any board member that wants to answer it. If you could please convey to me how our board goals, the superintendent's goals, and the administrators of our buildings line up with the strategic plan that was presented to us. That's the first one. And then the second question is, is anybody on this board actively involved or engaged in the development or insight or being updated as to this plan from its inception to now? Because here we sit as the board of directors for a corporation, basically. And we get this brought to us to review, we give our insight, and it's rubber stamped to where we are here tonight. So I would like to hear from my board members on those two questions. How do these things line up with our goals as a board, the superintendent's goals, and the principal's goals compared to the strategic plan? And secondly, that other question is, how does the strategic plan that we're voting on tonight, who was involved on this board in providing insight? Because as a board, I look at it from a standpoint that a strategic plan looks two to four years, two to five years down the road, the cardinal true north that we want the corporation to go. And here we are, you know, roughly two months before approving it tonight. We've already got a motion on the table and a second. And I don't know if we can answer those questions, so I'd love to hear from my board tonight.
I would like to speak. There was, I met with Mr. Schneider as soon as he came on board at South Spencer, and I gave him what the community has shared with me on what they would like to see within our school corporation. More CTE classes, which they are being available as of next year.
So are these board goals or things that the community would like to see? I'm saying specifically focusing on our board objectives of governance. What are the goals that we have set as a board in regards to toward this strategic plan?
As a board member, that was one of my goals. And I feel that that goal is being met. It is being, at least they're moving forward with that, with the CTE classes. And from, I'm assuming that the administration are a part of this decision-making of the strategic plan, all four principals, and I'm assuming board, or not board, but building leaders are a part of this decision-making as well. So I think that if they are unanimously supporting this, then why not support it?
So you said, assuming that the board leaders, the building leaders are on board. I don't assume with eighteen million dollar corporations. I'd like information and data, and I haven't been provided that. In our last meeting, George specifically said, show us other strategic plans and the measurable numbers, to quote his exact words. And that was what I thought was our understanding as a board in that public work session. And here we are, asked for them again this week, and still received nothing.
Let me, let me address some of this, all right? Give you a little background on this. The Indiana Department of Education formed three strategic planning consortiums in twenty twenty-one using federal SIR funds. South Spencer was one of six school corporations selected in our consortium. So it was South Spencer and five additional school corporations. Skybound Education was selected by the Indiana Department of Education to lead our consortium. Skybound Education supported the analysis of important data related to learning loss, provided guidance on ways to accelerate learning, and facilitated the development of multi-year strategic plans for all six school corporations. All six did their individual work, but they assisted with all of this. With this DOE program, Skybound will continue to support the development of our multi-year strategic plan. Skybound will continue to support South Spencer through September of twenty twenty-four. All right? And I got here, I would like to personally thank Mr. Adam Jones, Skybound, for his expertise and guidance through this process. Our strategic plan, as I said, our committee members, they start in twenty twenty-one, so I was not your superintendent, I was not employed at that time. But the committee was selected. It was Mr. Jim Bush, principal at the high school, Mr. Steve Sherman, assistant principal, David Hall, teacher at the high school, Clay Kress, who is a social worker at the high school, middle school, Scott French, the principal at the middle school, John Biggs, teacher at the middle school, Pam Wilkinson, teacher at the middle school, Cherry Adams, principal at Luce, Amy Chapman, teacher at Luce, Mr. Rick Hunt, principal at Rockport, Carrie Coombs, who is a teacher at Rockport, and myself. So this strategic committee has met countless hours, and they've dedicated a lot of time and input into this plan. I will be happy to share the other five plans when they are approved. They are all in different aspects of being approved. There's working documents. If you would like to see their working document, I would contact all five of the superintendents to see if they would be willing to share those, if that is something the board would like to see. I mentioned the Science of Reading Program, which is a program we're initiating at the elementaries. We feel this will enhance and improve our early literacy skills. This is a research-proven program, so it's got tons of data, research behind it that proves it works. There's almost a direct core one-to-one relationship between students' reading and their learning. As we said, great readers make great learners, good readers make good learners, and folks that struggle with reading, struggle with learning, all right? So that's a key component. The expansion of our career technical education and pathways will prepare all students for success after their K-12 experience. That's our goal. We want every child to be successful. We're also excited to partner with Ivy Tech to expand our dual credit offerings at the high school. Success will be defined by attaining a certificate for a skilled trade. It may be admission into an apprenticeship, it may be enrollment in a two-year college, it may be acceptance into a branch of the military, it may be moving directly into the workforce, or it may be enrollment in a four-year college program. At our work session, we talked about redefining college, what college means, all right? We're going to make that tent huge. We're going to, we want to cover all of our kids in that. So regardless of which career path our students choose, we want to prepare them as best we can to be successful at whatever pathway they select. Presenting and educating every student with the RIASC model, that's an interest survey where students, I'll give you a copy of this.
Thank you. I would love that. Thank you.
This is an interest inventory where elementary-age students can discuss what their strengths are and what they need to work on. And then that matches them up, their strengths match them up with possible career. So, and this, the light came on for me when we heard a gentleman who started this program. And this is all part of the, our service centers as a grant, a three-C grant. And again, you have to understand, this is all coming from the state. This is a huge push on having kids, preparing kids for the workforce. So they successfully received a grant, and we're part of that, we're working with that. And we had a gentleman come in from California that's been in this work for ten or twelve years. And I always thought, okay, you know, we say this is K-12, but you know, you know how hard it is for a high school kid to sit down and tell you what they want to be when they grow up? Or a middle school kid? How in the world's an elementary kid? And he explained how this works, and it's using common language. It's talking about this RIASC so that second graders, third graders can sit down, have a conversation with you, tell you what they're good at and what they might be in the future. So is it a final decision? No, but it's at least, it's getting that idea in their mind that this is important, okay? So the RIASC is a big part of this. We will share this information and vocabulary with parents because it's going to be very important, going to relearn what college is, what is college? It's not just a four-year, it's not go to IU or Western or Purdue or whatever. It, it's a whole lot more. So we're going to have those meetings and conversations with our parents. We're looking forward to sharing our strategic plan with parents in our community in more depth at meetings later this year. And as I said earlier, this is, this is a living, breathing document. We may change it to it just three weeks ago. So it's a good thing, and it's good for kids. And if there are specific goals, and, and none of the other five school corporations in our consortium have had school board members on it. Again, I wasn't part of the initial, I wasn't told we needed board members, there's, the other five have no board members either.
So, so, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
I'm not, I'm not asking for board members to be on it. I want to be updated as a living, breathing document that we are voting on this evening that we have a vested interest in our buildings, our employees, our students, our taxpayers, and our parents. Dropping a document like this and asking us to go through it and getting, giving input and having zero return on investment on what we bring up is the problem that I have with, the actual initiatives or the items that are listed on the far-left category, I have no problem with any of those. What you read off is excellent. The problem that I had and that I brought up to the board was the progress measures within that document, there's no teeth to that, there's no accountability, there's no measuring success versus failure. I'll give you a couple of examples. You talked about dual credit classes. A SMART goal for that specific initiative would say something like, two classes and two teachers over the next two years will get dual credit approval. It's specific. It's two teachers and two class, or two, and two classes. It's measurable because there's a number. It's attainable because it's something within our reach that we put out there as a challenge to our, our teachers, administrators, and the people involved in the process. It's also time-bound. We know at the end, this is the end goal of what we want. And it's that progress measure throughout this that I think the public, the parents and stuff would say, hey, do we, hey, wait a minute. One of the examples is order local and sustainable produce for use in school meals. The measuring progress is partner with local farmers and share data with the state. If I make one call to Tyler's family and say, hey, we want to order peaches, I've met this complete goal according to that measure. How about a SMART goal? That's what I ask in the public meeting, is let's have some meat and taters on the plate instead of this saying we have a plan. It's like I said, I love the, I love the leaders that we've selected for these, I love the, the values, I'm not asking us to be involved in the development, but I'd like to see that the measures that we select for our goals line up not just with the people in these categories, but the same with the board, the same with the superintendent, so that we're all pointing true north to the end goal of providing the best education for our children. So I appreciate the information that you, you provided there, but it doesn't give me the answer to any of these questions that I've asked my board. How does this line up with our goals and the goals that we've given Mr. Schneider?
So first, I would just like to say thank you to all of the committee members that have put their time and effort into this plan. I know it takes a lot to be out of the building, you've got extra headaches, and so to put this together and spend the time to work on it, thank you, I appreciate that. I am glad that we are focusing on curriculum. I think in the past couple of years, it's always been about what buildings look like. And we've done a lot with renovations, and I think all of that is great. And I think now it's time to start with our curriculum and our academics, and I think this is a good start. Now, yes, do I think there could possibly be some changes in the way that some of this is worded? Yes, but I think this is a good start. And I think as they go along through this, because even with like the CTE classes, I don't know if we can say right now that we want two classes with two teachers. I think it depends on some of our accreditation and some of what our teacher licensing is going to be.
I was just giving that as an example.
Right. And so I still think there's a lot of things here that's new, and I think once they go through the plan and once it becomes a living, a true living document, things are going to change, and I think a lot of that can be updated. So I think this is a good start. I think, you know, you've got five goals, it involves the community, it involves all our stakeholders. There are lots of initiatives for each goal, so I think part of that, some of that is going to be hard to have number measurements for. But I'm glad to see this put together. So thank all of you that are here on that committee.
Yeah, we do. I know Mrs. Adams, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Sherman are here.
I think it's definitely going to give us a good baseline. I mean, like I said, a lot of stuff is in.
Right. I mean, it's only going to.
And trying to put numbers on them right now. I'm not saying we can't in the future, but as far as right now, we've got to kind of get focused on what we're doing and what's going to work and what's not.
And to have all of our buildings together working on this, I think is awesome. I mean, that shows that our school corporation is coming together and working on this together, and, and that's what I like to see too. And even with our, some of our board training, Mr. Horton, he's like, you know, why are your corporation goals not your board goals? And so I see this as a good starting point for where our goals are and can continue and just move forward with that.
And, and I, you know, I, I want the board's approval for this because we are going to spend money on this. I mean, if we're going to offer these CTE programs, you know, we're going to have to go out and add additional staff. You know, I know we got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the radio, television, the media. You know, we've got the nursing program that we want to offer. We're looking at welding, welding program that will actually provide a certificate upon completion. We have welding now, and it's great, Mr. Hurley does a great job, but we want to bump that up. You know, law enforcement. So that's where we're starting, but this, this, this is, this is going to take resources. So I think more than anything, I just want the board to support the vision we have. You know, we talked about a summer work session. I mean, I think that'd be great because as a board, I don't know what your goals are. I don't. I've asked that repeatedly, I asked that at my first interview. What, what does the board want? What goals do you have? So I think that would be great. That would give us an opportunity to align those goals with the corporation goals, but I'm proud of this work, and I'm proud of my administrators, I'm proud of my teachers. And I know you guys weren't there, but there was a lot of great discussion that went on, a lot of sharing of ideas. And where we started wasn't necessarily where we ended up because people shared different perspective, different ideas. So I was super thrilled to be part of it. With this being my first year, I got to learn an awful lot. And I do think we've got a good pathway forward. Is it perfect? No. But let's, let's work on it together, and let's work on it as a superintendent, as a board, as a staff, as a community, because that's what it's going to take, guys. If, if we're going to get back to when South Spencer was great, that's what it's going to take. It's going to take everybody working together. And that's, that's, I think this is a great way to start. I'll just leave it at that and go for it.
I agree, I agree, and I, and I support that. And, and like I said earlier, I have had many community parents come to me, and they shared what they would like to see what South Spencer could offer to their children, to the students, and I have shared that with you. Whether it's the same as Janet, or Tyler, or George, or Matt, I don't know. That's five different ideas here. So if we just put them together and move forward, that would be great.
I appreciate the open discussion and the comments from the board. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on that then? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number two.
With the resignation of our speech-language pathologist, Jenna Hickden, we must find a way to provide speech services to our students for the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I've worked closely with our special ed co-op on this issue, and the best option is to work with an independent provider. We met with multiple providers, and due to past performance and availability of licensed speech-language pathologists to provide speech services to students at Luce, the middle school, high school, and St. Bernard's for the remainder of the school year. I provided a copy of the agreement with presence learning in your board packet. And this evening, I'd like to recommend the board approve that agreement with presence learning to provide speech services to our students for the rest of the school year as presented.
Did, did you list all of the schools in that?
All the ones at Presence is going to be providing services for our Mrs. Angela English is the SLP at Rockport. She does the preschool program and the Head Start program. So though Rockport will not be impacted, they have their SLP, she's got her caseload. And we divided that early when we hired the speech-language, so they each had about seventy students on their caseload. Rockport just has a much higher.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but information you provided us on this topic was, it looked like this is almost virtual.
It is.
So we're going to take four of our five buildings and do virtual speech-language pathology, and then take one of the schools and do it in person? My dad was a speech-language pathologist, and nothing beats in-person education, as we've noticed going through a pandemic. Do we, do we as a corporation think that it's the best to segregate by building versus need?
Well, no, we're not segregating by building, and there's no question, in-person is better.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not trying to blink anybody on that. There simply are no speech-analyst pathologists out there for us to hire.
I'm, I'm just asking, the, the one that we currently have is, is, is she servicing the priority people that need face-to-face therapy and?
She put two, two students on her case list.
Right.
Her caseload.
Yes. I'm just thinking, if, if I'm, if I'm a taxpayer and I'm, and my child's in a different building,
Yeah.
and you've got someone that's in-house, in-person, that's capable of doing that therapy, that training, that, that, those, meeting those needs, and the answer is, well, that's, she's not over the building that you're in, it's kind of, it's a little odd in my opinion versus...
Well, I mean, I can...
Services.
Yeah, and it's, it's unfortunate, I mean, things just didn't work out. We waited, I mean, we, we shipped a lot of trees, the SLP we found, but it just didn't work out. We have every intention of trying to hire one, and I can tell you, North Spencer used this same agreement to provide speech services to their students this year because they couldn't hire a speech-language person too, so... Is it ideal? No, but we also, you have to know, we have a legal obligation to provide these students these services. So this is our best solution.
Okay.
And it's not like it's a full year, it's, this is April, school's out in May, it's just...
But they're behind their full school.
They are behind, and it, it, it very well may take us after the school year to catch up with the students because it's, it's, it's been a rocky road. And we did send a letter home to parents today, letting them know the changes that are coming. But yes, it's very possible it goes past the last day of school because we have a legal obligation to provide per a certain number of minutes, speech services to students, so we're, we're gonna meet that.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Motion by Tyler, a second?
A second.
Second by Melissa, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number three.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request from the archery team to attend the NASP Nationals in Louisville, Kentucky on May 12th, 2023. I recommend the board approve their request as presented.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I make a move that we accept this and this travel to the Nationals in Louisville.
So, motion by Matt, a second?
I'll second.
No.
Second by Tyler, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then number four.
We received four proposals for the position of school board attorney, and the full board reviewed those proposals at our March 10th, 2023 work session. We're very appreciative of the proposals and feel all four of the firms could provide outstanding legal services to the school board and corporation. It is a recommendation to name Andrew Foster of the law firm of Andrew Foster as a school board attorney as presented.
Alright, can I get a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second your motion.
Second by Matt, any discussion?
I'll abstain. I would like to make a statement, I would like to thank all of the time and effort that you have guided us and led us to, whatever it was, I'm sure that you have put in a lot of time, and I appreciate everything that you've done for our board. Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Yes, thank you. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. With one abstaining, so the motion carries four. Oh, with one abstaining. And then number five.
Thank you. In your board packet, you'll find a request from Mr. Dean Schiff to declare a set of kettle drums as surplus equipment to make them available for sale. Sale will be published and properly advertised and bits will be received on the corporation website. I recommend the board declare said items as surplus and grant approval to sell said items as presented.
Alright, can I get a motion?
I move that we place these things up for surplus on the website as described in the information given by Mr. Schneider.
Okay, so motion by Matt, a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And number six.
Thank you. This year, Luce and Rockport Elementary applied to the Department of Education to be part of the Indiana Literacy Cadre Part II, and fortunately, both schools were selected. In your board packet, I've provided you a summary of the assurances to be part of the cadre. This is an outstanding opportunity to increase our literary skills and scores. The Department of Ed will provide each school an instructional coach that will be trained in the science of reading that will work directly with our primary teachers to implement and enhance our science of reading curriculum and instructional practices. All training and professional development will be paid for by the Indiana Department of Education. Corporation will be responsible for one-third of the coach's salaries in year one and two-thirds of the coach's salaries in year two. As a side note, we will be using S R M R Ds to fund the difference. So this program is gonna be at no cost to the school corporation. This is an outstanding opportunity to increase student literacy in our schools. Research is very clear, you've heard this before tonight. Great readers are great learners, good readers are good learners, and poor readers are poor learners. The correlation between reading and learning is extremely strong. I recommend the board approve the participation of Luce and Rockport Elementary in the Indiana Literacy Cadre II as presented.
I'll motion.
Motion by George, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tyler, any discussion?
I 100% support this, I would like to know if you could provide what happens after the 24-25 school year with salary and funding? Where's that come from?
I've got a plan, I'll be happy to share it with you. Today, tomorrow... Huh? You wanna do it tomorrow, I'll, I'll share it with you tomorrow. I mean, part of it is, I, I, we're gonna, I had this conversation with Mr. Hunt and Mrs. Adams. Part of it is, we wanna see, I mean, we currently have two coaches in each building, okay? So my thoughts, I'll just share it with you now. Moving forward is, those two positions, we would absorb them into the reading. I mean, that's what they're primarily doing now.
Okay.
Right? So really, even after 2024, I don't see any additional staffing at this time. After we get into this and I say, okay, we, we need three coaches, not two.
Right.
Then I will come to you at that time and say, this is why we need it.
Right, if your return on investment's phenomenal, it's worth it.
It will be.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have consideration of personnel recommendations.
And I will ask the board, are you in agreement to take all of these as one, or would you like to take one out or two out?
Almost one.
Oh, it'd be fine.
And then I'm gonna abstain because of B.
Okay, alright, very good. Personnel recommendations this evening. John Hurley, summer school supervised ag agriculture experience. Mr. Brett Schulte, summer school math teacher. Nick Ante, summer school English teacher. Mr. Greg Keith, high school summer band teacher. Jonathan Hatchett, Rockport Elementary Teachers Aid effective April 3rd, 2023. And Abby Madison, high school head cheerleading sponsor effective with the 2023-2024 season.
Alright, can I get a motion to accept?
I'll motion.
Motion by George, a second?
I'll second.
Tyler, a second?
Tyler's seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you say you abstained?
So motion carries four oh with one abstaining. And then number two.
This evening, I'd like to recommend the board approve the hiring of two summer school bus cleaners for eight hours a day, fifteen days during the summer.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
No motion.
Motion by Melissa, a second?
I'll second.
Second by George, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have some information items that were reported to the board, which included the technology report, the maintenance report, the transportation report, and the new volunteers report. Are there any statements or concerns of the board?
The only thing that I would, I'd, I'd have to say is that, how many more weeks left until the summer program? I'm sure that the students and the teachers are looking forward to it. I know it's been a stressful year trying to recoup from, from COVID. Hang in there, you guys are tough, I, I got faith in you, you got it.
Alright, anything else? Our next regular meeting of the board will be Monday, May 8th at 6:00 PM here in the multipurpose, multipurpose room at the high school. Time to adjourn, 6:41, can I get a motion?
A motion.
George, a motion, a second?
A second.
Second by Melissa, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh, meeting is adjourned.